Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hubei Unified School District Board Meeting, Monday, April 6, 2020. It is currently 6:09 PM. Roll call, please.
President Ortega?
Present.
Trustee Bradford? Trustee Bradford? Trustee Bradford? Trustee Bradford, are you present?
Present. It wasn't allowing me to unmute myself.
Trustee Chard? Trustee Chard, are you present? Trustee Chard?
I'm here. It was, it keeps going to mute. It keeps muting us.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Garcia, are you present? Trustee Garcia, are you present? Trustee Garcia, are you present?
Present.
Trustee Regal?
Present.
Superintendent Duchon?
I am present.
Mrs. Ford?
Present.
Dr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Dubravsky? Mr. Dubravsky?
Present.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brooks is present.
Okay, President Ortega. It's appropriate to open the meeting.
Okay, thank you for a roll call. And we have the here, the hearing session.
No reports from closed session first?
Oh, yes, sorry. Reports from closed session. Mr. Brooke?
Yes, thank you. By a vote of five to zero, the board resolved to defend and indemnify current and former employees named as individual defendants in United States District Court Case Number 518-CV-00332-SVW-SPX, as authorized in Government Code Section 825B. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Recognition.
Recognition National School Bus Drivers Day, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. In April, we celebrate National School Bus Drivers Recognition Day, which is officially April 28th this year. Normally, we would have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate our bus drivers in person, and I know we all look forward to that. Unfortunately, we won't be able to do so this year, but nevertheless, we want to recognize and thank them for being there each day to safely transport the most precious cargo of all, which is our students. And we want to say a special thanks to all of our JUSD bus drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, is, were any public verbal comments submitted?
President Ortega, we have one comment submitted from Wendy Echols, and it is, greetings trustees, Superintendent Duchon, and Cabinet. I hope that you and your families are well. I would like to start off by saying thank you. Thank you to the district for acting so quickly in March to ensure the safety of our staff, students, and community by closing the schools. On behalf of NEA Harupa, I appreciate the collaborative nature that we engaged in and the process in which we worked on our joint communication case. This time has been unprecedented, to say the least. We ran into a few stumbles last week, so I appreciate the district working with us on an MOU. Special thanks to Mr. Brooks as we worked on it well until Friday night, late enough that he needed to take a short break to put his daughters to bed. That does not go unnoticed. The MOU has brought clarity and reassurance to our membership. It is my sincerest hope that administrators at the site level will respect our agreement and refrain from adding increased anxiety, stress, and trauma to our members, and by extension, our students. Last week, I came to the realization that we are all feeling grief. We are grieving for the loss of the year for our staff, for our students, for our communities as we navigate this new normal. Our members are working more than ever to try to find ways to engage with our students to the best of their abilities and in conjunction with their comfort levels. That should be respected, and they should not be made to feel like they aren't doing enough. They are. There are a myriad of personal stories, including caring for young children and elderly parents being at risk themselves, having connectivity issues, just trying to keep it together. Our members are professionals who will find a way to connect with their students, a way that works for that group. Please know that I came across a social media post that really hit home the other day. Have you ever taken a class online? How about six at once? When were you a teenager? With spotty Wi-Fi and systems crashing and needing to share a device with siblings while trapped at home filled with fear and anxiety? Yeah, me neither. Let's cut these kids some slack. My addition to that is, let's cut these families and teachers some slack, too. I look forward to continuing to collaborate as we move through these times. Best to all of you, and please stay well. Thank you. That's the end of public comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead.
And then we'll move on to three administrative reports and ring communication. Item A, Mr. Dubravsky.
Thank you. We had no complaints.
Thank you. And item B, Mr. Duchon.
Thank you, President Ortega. I'm gonna take a few minutes, and this is essentially an update on the district response and closures throughout the state in response to the COVID-19 virus. As you know, things are a little bit different, but I'll start out with kind of an odd and bright note. During the plague, Shakespeare wrote the Bach, Macbeth, King Lear, and Antony and Cleopatra. Maybe sometime at home, right now, the next Shakespeare in Harupa Valley is writing great plays. We, as you know, as kind of evidenced by this meeting, are doing things differently, and they take some adaptation, and that's exactly what's happening in classrooms, really across the country. So I want to start out by coupling on the words of Mrs. Echols, who really was thanking us to thank her, all of the representatives of NEAJ and CSEA. They have been extraordinary partners in moving rapidly, decisively, and responding to the needs of the students and the community during this crisis. As you are aware, we are feeding students at 11 sites. It's our cafeteria workers who have been out there day after day during school. At one site last week during spring break, I mean, the week before, and I'll sign with stat, and at 11 sites this week. The response has been incredible. Our ed services staff, along with staff from technology, I think I had sent you an update about that, have put together an absolutely remarkable online portal and curriculum for every single break in subject area in the district, including activities that focus on mindfulness, physical activity, and even remind students to go get their lunch. I think, you know, I think we have one of the best around. I've offered it to other districts to take a look at it. Thanks to the community and the board and Measure, Measure E, the old Measure E, we were able to give our kids computers five years ago. So we've been in a relatively good position to deliver distance learning. Right now, under the county order, we are closed till June 19th, and that's, I think, by the health officers' concept that all, that applies to all schools and universities, public and private, in Riverside County. As you know, we're through by Memorial Day. That will actually end after what would be the beginning of our summer school. So we're looking at providing a digital summer session. Right now, as I'm meeting with teachers, principals, and staff online, we're finding anywhere, depending on the classroom, 30 to 80% of students are participating in some type of distance learning. We're hoping to reach all students, and I believe, starting this week, Mr. Lewis was pushing out a survey to try to identify everyone who does not have internet, because there's free internet available for all students in the district. Across the state, the California Department of Education has issued voluminous guidance on what we may do. There is nothing required as of now. Should we have to go into next year for any reason, I believe we will be looking at requirements right now, which everybody, including us, is doing the best we can. We are using our curriculum. We're telling teachers to focus on material that's readily available. Interestingly, many of our teachers have wanted to maintain a very rigorous curriculum, and I applaud them for that. They are, some are introducing new concepts, but that is not a requirement we've made of our teachers. As stipulated in the MOU, we're requiring that they make contact with their students. They make sure their student, you know, they provide support to their students, but we're not, and record participation, but not that they take attendance, and in no way will be evaluated on how their students participate during this time. By the same token, many of our classified staff are participating in a, I'm gonna say a multitude of ways, because our benefits payroll staff, eight accounts payable staff, other business staff, contract staff are working from home to make sure the business office keeps working, really without missing a beat. I want to thank Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Benson, and just all the many, many people in the Business Services Division for doing that. Mr. Bynum and his food services staff have been unbelievable. I hear, I meet with online other superintendents at least once a week, and many districts are struggling through feeding the families in the district. And by the way, under federal guidance, we are providing meals to any, any minor, anybody under 18. We don't ask for IDs. It can be any child, and we're actually encouraging families not to bring their children. But we're complying with federal guidance, but, and I can't remember off the top of my head, and I'm sorry, the number of meals we've served altogether, but thanks to them. Our head custodians have been checking schools out routinely through the week. Our plan is that we will not do a deep cleaning until we know we're gonna lift the closure of schools, so that essentially the buildings can air out as long as they can before we have to bring custodians in. So we have had many, many, many staff engaged, including our certificated staff who are psychologists, counselors, speech and occupational therapists, and contract, not employees, but contractors who are providing those services. We are complying with the governor's pillars of his mandate to pay contracts that would have been assumed to be gotten under the existing contract codes, but we're also scrutinizing that those contractors pay those employees, and if at all possible, continue to offer services. As is the same with our employees who are being paid through the end of the school closure, both teachers, classified management staff. It has been an incredibly big undertaking, but gone, I have to say, just incredibly smoothly, given the, just the, the really all hands on board, literally, throughout the district. Our principals have been rallying their staffs. Our teachers have been there and ready, many independently reaching their students. Classified staff have been participating in a number of ways. And I can take any questions of just some general things and maybe specifics that I can still remember. By the way, some of us cabinet administrators have spent our entire days on Zoom, WebEx, and Google meetings, and can probably give a critique of each one. I have, just speaking personally, it doesn't give you a whole lot of time to walk around and take breaks between meetings. There's not even the excuse to drive to the next meeting. So it's been a little bit of a challenge, but I think we've been very efficient in conducting the business of the district. So thank you, President Ortega.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item C. Other administrative reports?
There are none, so you can move on to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would like to open for public hearing and the, hold the public hearing on intent to adopt sanctuary level one school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial development. Is there any public, anyone in the public members wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, President Ortega. This is Dr. Hanson. I will read a little bit of the background.
Okay.
Then you will go ahead and open the public hearing. So on January 22nd, 2020, the State Allocation Board increased the maximum statutory school facilities fees, also known as level one fees, levied pursuant to Education Code Section 17620. This resulted in an increase to level one fees to $4.08 per square foot on new residential construction, and $0.66 per square foot for commercial industrial construction. Our current level fee, level one fees are at $3.79 per square foot on residential, and 61 per square foot for commercial and industrial construction. Cooperative Strategies prepared a school fee justification study for us to update both the residential and commercial industrial statutory school facilities fees, which substantiates the continuing need to collect such fees in the maximum allowable amount. Both the residential and commercial fees justification studies were available for public review from March 26, 2020 through April 6, 2020, on the district website. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive input and testimony on levying level one fees as proposed in Resolution Number 2020/30, which would increase fees to $4.08 per square foot for residential and $0.66 per square foot for commercial and industrial construction. In accordance with Government Code Section 606-2A, the first notice of the public hearing was published in the newspaper on March 26th. The second notice, public hearing, was published in the newspaper on April 1st. Board action to adopt this resolution of statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial development is scheduled under regular action. Item C later in this meeting. So it's our direction tonight that President Ortega, that you should formally open and close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2020/30 statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial development.
President Ortega, we have not received any comments on the public hearing for that resolution.
Okay, thank you. So seeing none, at this time, we will have to close the session, but also it would be, this resolution will be addressed in the action item, in the action session. I know, for me, close a public hearing on the intent to adopt level one century school fees imposed on new residential and commercial and industrial development. So at this time, we would like to refresh school board members' our screens. And if I can get a motion and a second to adopt items A1 through 21. So moved.
Second, by Mr. Garcia.
First, by trustee Chard, I believe, and second by trustee Garcia. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
This is trustee Chard.
Thank you. And we'll move for the vote.
I had a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. Are we, I'm getting confused. Are we raising our hands? Or like, is it being monitored? I know there's a couple times I've raised my hands, and it seems that we're just passing through. I mean, sorry, I don't want to sound curt, but maybe we should slow down a little bit, make sure that people get the opportunity to raise their hands to ask their questions. And I just had one question for Paula on agenda item seven. Had, you know, I noticed that we have some pricing for the lodging or the transportation, excuse me. Have those prices been adjusted, or is that something that we are, you know, contracted in, that we're still gonna have to cover those fees, even though we're not using the contracted busing companies?
Those particular, the Student Transportation of America, that's what you're?
Yes, I can't open it now, so.
Referring to, yeah, those have all been transportation services that have already happened and been provided.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions? I'm sorry, I can't see if there are raised hands or not. But any further, any further?
Maybe you can.
I'm still waiting for a vote from trustee Regal.
Okay. Okay, passes.
Okay, you can move on to item B.
Okay, item B, Dr. Hanson, please.
Good evening. Thank you, President Ortega. On February 21st and 28th, district staff solicited bids for the Pedley Elementary School's Six Portable Additions Project. Thirteen bids were received at the bid opening on March 18th. After review of all bids, administration believes it is in the best interest of the district to reject all the bids and authorize staff to rebid the project at this time. Administration also recommends that the bid documents be revised in order to clarify project requirements. So this evening, administration recommends the board reject all bids received and authorize the rebid of number 19-20-08PD, Pedley Elementary School Six Portable Additions Project with revised budget specifications.
And President Ortega, you can call for motion, and then see if there's any discussion.
So moved. Trustee Bradford. Bradford, second. Again, by trustee Regal. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will move for the vote. Item passes five zero. We'll move on to item C, Dr. Hanson.
Yes, this item refers to the public hearing that was recently held. The district collects statutory school facility fees in the amount of $3.79 per square foot for residential construction, and $0.61 per square foot for commercial and industrial construction. On January 22nd, 2020, the State Allocation Board increased the maximum residential school fee for level one fees to $4.08 per square foot for residential, and $0.66 per square foot for commercial and industrial construction. In order to maintain the fees at the statutory level, the district must justify that the fee is reasonable and demonstrate that it bears a relationship on the impact of new housing and commercial industrial construction. The district retained cooperative strategies, strategies, a public finance and planning consultant to update, to update the current school facility studies that establishes a connection between new residential, commercial, industrial construction, and the need for new school facilities. The fee justification study was available for review on March 26th through April 6th on the district website. So this evening, administration recommends the board adopt Resolution Number 2020/30 statutory school fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial development.
Move for approval. It's trustee Garcia.
Second by trustee Regal.
Okay. Second by trustee Garcia's, first by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Regal. I will call for the vote.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, questions or comments?
Yes, this is trustee Bradford. I just wanted to make sure the distinction is between the per square foot is the habitable or, or office space rather than referring to lot size.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We need a vote from trustee Chard.
I'm sorry, just a point of order. My phone has been muted. I cannot get in. I've been trying, and until I get unlocked by the host, I cannot weigh in on anything.
Trustee Chard, can you raise your hand, please, on there?
Do you see where to raise your hand, trustee Chard?
Yes, I do. Now it's letting me do that, but every time I go to that, it says that I'm muted by the host.
When you raise your hand, the host should be able to call on you. You have comments on some of the on one of the items?
No, I didn't. I just, I couldn't. I was trying to weigh in, if I wanted to weigh in. I went to say something, and the question was answered, so there wasn't any problem there, but I was having difficulty. I don't know why. I wasn't using the raise my hand. I was trying to unmute my microphone, but it said all participants had been muted, so I.
Yeah, the unmute does not work. You have to raise your hand.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding. I apologize. I will follow that now.
Just, just one of the protocols that makes this so difficult.
Understand, I understand. Thank you.
We still need a vote from trustee Chard.
It didn't come up on my computer, on my iPad either. Let me, I'll refresh, all right?
Please refresh. Thank you.
I refreshed earlier, but I'll refresh again. I apologize. It came in now.
Thank you. Vote passes 5-0. Item D, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. In order to prepare for the 2020-21 school year, the district and schools may need to order materials prior to the start of the new fiscal year. The Riverside County Office of Education requires the board adopt a resolution authorizing the district to commit funds before the approval of the 2020-21 budget. So at this time, administration is recommending that the board adopt Resolution 2020/26 Authorization to Encumber Funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Okay, we need a motion?
Move to approve. This is trustee Regal.
First by trustee Regal. Come on. I can take it. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move.
Where's trustee Regal's hand up?
I don't know. I can't, I don't, I don't know how to see hands up or not.
Josh, Mr. Lewis can see them. It should be under by your participants also. Is that correct, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, that's correct. I believe she had the hand up to make a motion.